To order, we'll begin with a prayer by Commissioner Foster, pledge by Commissioner Vandergriff.
Let's pray. I dare to call, Lord, to thank for the state, thank you for the opportunity to get together, Lord, and just do the business of the county and just pray for everyone here tonight, Lord, as we go into the holiday season and Christmas right around the corner, Lord, that we remember the cheer meeting of Christmas, and just thank you for your love and your mercy, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the appearance of citizens. If there's anyone here who would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda already, you can come up and do so now, just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Any item that's not on the agenda. Seeing no one, we'll move on to approval and correction of agendas, starting with the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve, seconded by Commissioner Allen, approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move to the regular agenda. Any changes or corrections?
Is the ending, I mean, reservation, is it?
On the, on the purchase agreement, it's already, it's already under here on number six.
No, the public hearing we got.
Yeah, it's on, it's on here. It's after the, after the approval. Motion to approve by Commissioner Jaeger. We have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Vowell. Any discussion on the regular agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, number five, we'll move to the public hearing report. Vice Chairman Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the consent agenda, six o'clock meeting, we had a public hearing on resolution number twenty-two dash twelve dash nine six eight to amend the zoning resolution to include property at one-two-seven Straighter Road, Powell, parcel one-two-nine, Anderson County Tax Map zero-nine-seven from A two, from a rural residential district to C one, a general commercial district. The owners of the property spoke, as well as three in opposition to it.
I've got a question, and this might be for planning or Marjorie. In, in a situation like this, where, where they kind of described what they were wanting to do, what, what would be the difference in, in changing the zoning altogether, like they're proposing, or just going to the BZA for a variance or something like their?
Sorry.
You cannot run an automotive type repair shop in a residential zone. It's not a variance type thing. It's not a special exception. It has to be zoned C one.
Okay, that, that answers that. Thank you. Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, I had a question, and I understand this is for a, for a small shop, but what other types of, and would it permit, would it be allowed? Give you a few examples of other types of businesses if this is rezoned?
I would have to pull that up. Can you give me two minutes?
While we're waiting, Commissioner McCamey, what was your motion?
My motion is to go ahead and approve the planning commission recommendation.
Seconded by Commissioner Mays. Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While Marjorie's looking for that information, that's kind of one of the things that was concerning me is, what, what's to stop the next request? And then, once we allow this change, if it, if it passes, it, it, it will be hard to tell the next folks that they can't. So, you know, what I just heard in a question was, you can't run this type of business out of the current zoning. Sounds like it's been running out of that type of business already. So, to, to make it right, they're asking to, to make it what it should be, but as I said earlier, I'm not going to vote for this. We have commercial areas in Claxton, hear about it all, all the time on Clinton Highway in Claxton and how bad it looks, and now what we're wanting to do is go on into the communities that go off the road. So, I'm always going to be adamantly against that, and everyone else can vote for it if they choose, but I'll vote no. My next question would be, why is zoning not doing their job and taking care of things when businesses are being ran out of residential areas? That would be a question I have. Thank you.
As far as zoning and, and property maintenance, we basically work on complaint. If nobody has complained at the time, we don't drive straight a road every day, so we wouldn't know that they're running a business.
Mr. Chairman, I think you would know when they came and asked to make the change.
Correct, and that, that's why they, that's why, you know, we didn't go out there because they came and asked for the change. We didn't, we told them that they shouldn't be running a business out of an A two, so.
So, the fix is to allow them to move it to commercial?
Rezoning it, yes. That's the only fix.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Uses permitted in a C one zone, hotels, motels, tourist courts, churches and mortararies, drive-in establishments for retail sale of merchandise, professional offices, private and medical dental offices, gasoline service stations, automobile service, sales and repair establishments, furniture and appliance sales, service and repair establishments, tire sales, recapping and retreading establishments, commercial recreational uses, wholesaling and distributing centers, less than seventy-five hundred square feet, signs, shopping centers, grocery stores, equipment stores, department stores, and general retail sales, personal storage and rental units.
So, if this zoning change is approved, possibly any one of those-
Anything, yes, any one of those could be.
In the future could-
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Be legitimate.
Yes, sir.
Not likely, but.
Not likely, but yes. Any other questions?
Commissioner Foster.
If we rezone this, because it's commercial property, they have to come back and submit a site plan, or since it's just, it's a current business, they don't have to submit a site plan?
They'll have to submit plans for the business.
For the planning commission.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion is to approve as recommended by the planning commission. Yes. Five yes, ten no. Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was all for the public hearing portion.
Thank you. Commissioner Wondell?
Mr. Chairman, if the owner would like to come back and ask, he would be allowed, correct? I mean.
They're, they, they have to go back through the planning commission?
They would have to go back to, probably go to BZA, is what you'd have to do now. That'd be the proper procedure.
I just wanted to make sure they understood what their options were to them. Thank you.
Next, item number six. Commissioner Isbell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Before we get started on that one, as it says, tourism by Stephanie Wells, director, purchase and sell agreement deferred from operations. We didn't have a purchase agreement, or unless we're talking about the purchase and sale only of the property, because that did pass unanimous through operations. But the contract to go in with the chamber board to build another building, it didn't even get a motion. So, it failed out, it failed out of operations.
So, this is just, just a presentation by tourism, not an actual, not the, yeah, not a-
Mr. Chairman, I think-
Motion.
We deferred this last month's meeting, I believe.
To operations. Yeah, we deferred it.
We deferred it in full commission last month. I made the motion, and Commissioner Beauchamp seconded the motion. We were just going around the circle, I mean, just going around, and it definitely had no legs to get off the ground, and so a motion of defer was made for more information, because we didn't have any information at the time. So, I don't think anything was deferred from operations.
I believe it was deferred for thirty days, is the, from, to, back to commission till the next month's meeting.
Yeah, it was deferred to now, yeah.
Yes. I think operations did take action, but it was deferred to come back to this, to this meeting.
Well, it was actually deferred to operations, and then from operations back to full commission.
I read the minutes of the meeting, and it was deferred, and then my board took action, so that's what I'm presenting here tonight, is that, is the action that my board took.
Of the Tourism Council.
Yes, the Tourism Council took.
Okay.
It was the sale that we deferred. We didn't defer any contract with tourism in the chamber, because we didn't have anything to discuss. So, it was deferred to full commission, my understanding, when I made the motion.
Okay. Step, whenever you're ready. Stephanie?
Um, yes, so my board, if I recall correctly, at the, at the last meeting of commission, when it was deferred, a lot of the questions were concerning, where are we going, what was, you know, if we sold the building, where are we going? So, my board met on December the sixth and worked with a contract that Jay Jaeger, our county attorney, put together for us with Anderson County Chamber, and so that is presented. They approved that contract, and then that is presented. And I understand, you know, there's been a lot of confusion, there's been a lot of conversation about this issue. Back in January, earlier this year, in January, we came with our board's recommendation to sell our property and to work with the chamber to build a new property. The chamber then purchased property, and we moved forward that process. In June, this county commission approved to sell the building, to go to auction, to surplus the property, to go to auction, and then we worked through that process and conducted the auction on November the fifteenth. And then, that, we came back last month to approve that sale, and I know there was a lot of questions about where are we going, what are we going to do, do we have something, some solid, you know, something on paper as to where we are going. So, again, our board worked through that contract. We have a contract that is in your packet right now for consideration for approval. That will be a joint building with the Anderson County Chamber. They will build a total of twelve thousand five hundred square feet, and then we would purchase three thousand square feet.
Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we, while we take things to committee is for it to be discussed fully in committee. And if we bypass our rules, then why do we have committees? We've had this before, and we took up both things on the agenda, the purchase or the sale of the land, which passed unanimous, and then we took up the contract. And I sat on the tourism board, too, and we got the contract. Jay worked through lunch and got it done. We had twenty-five minutes to go over, thirty minutes maybe, and I didn't approve it then, and I still don't approve it. And I gave out a little history for the new commissioners of what happened in the operations committee. But then again, what my point is, is how do we jump over what our committee says and go ahead and vote on this in full commission when it don't even get a, a motion to be approved? I mean, nobody even made a motion. But January eighteen, twenty-twenty-two, agenda document reads, six p.m. presentation by the chamber tourism in the seat of, Rick Merritt, Stephanie Wells, discuss the idea of joint location. As tourism has changed, purpose has changed over the years, and we all agree that there's, you know, no walk-in business. On February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, forward as a motion from operations committee on February fourteen, twenty-twenty-two, Commissioner Wondell made a motion allow, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to allow tourism director Stephanie Wells to move forward with appraisal on a visitor of center facility, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Motion passed, May sixteen, twenty-twenty-two. Forward as a motion from operations committee, Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to allow the tourism council, based on the request of Stephanie Wells, tourism director, and her board to proceed with Anderson County Chamber and the city to explore, enter an agreement for new building location presented. Motion passed, June twenty-twenty-two. Forward as a motion first committee meeting of January thirteen, twenty-twenty-two, Commissioner Merritt made a motion to approve the surplus there Anderson County Welcome Center via auction by professional auctioneer with a minimum bid of six hundred dollars, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed. Now, that sale brought more than that, so that's already been approved by our rules. I mean, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer. But then again, we go right back, and then if we go to our rules of procedure, rule twenty-three, motions to rescind something adopted at a previous meeting require two-thirds majority, or eleven people, vote by commission for approval. So, sometimes, you know, if, if we don't respect our committees, that's what it's for. I think we shouldn't even be taking up the contract to enter into the agreement with the board, with the chamber board. I think the only thing that we should be taking up for a vote is the sale. Thank you.
Parliamentarian McCamey or vice-parliamentarian Jaeger? If, if something goes to operations committee and doesn't get a vote or a recommendation, can it still be voted on, since it's in the minutes and it comes to us at the next commission? Can it still get voted on without a formal recommendation or?
In this case, it could, because it's a recommendation from the tourism board, which is a committee that, you know, would, would handle anything tourism, and they've made a recommendation to the full commission to go ahead and accept, I mean, accept the contract.
Okay, so it's up to, I mean, if nobody makes a motion.
Yeah.
I mean, if.
It actually went to two different committees, but it didn't get a vote in one, but it did get a vote in the other. I think it was what.
Well, and again, I mean, it was deferred from last month to come back to commission, and I was asked by several commissioners, tell us, give us information on where we're going, what are we doing? Because I know, I understand that a lot of commissioners are new and maybe not have been in the conversation since January. So, now we have on paper documented where we're going, what we're doing, all the stipulations, all the, all the, you know, allowances and disallowances, all on paper, and so that's what I'm presenting back to you all this evening.
What was the vote of the tourism council?
Um, for this contract, it was unanimous back in January, and then I believe it was fourteen to one for this contract.
What do you mean by this contract? Are you talking about?
The contract with the chamber.
With the chamber.
With the contract of purchase.
That's the contract.
Yes. The other contract would be to sell the building, and that-
Can you make that clear for us?
Yes, yes.
When you say contract, it's kind of generic to us.
Sure, absolutely. So, the contract that Jay prepared says, commercial real estate sales contract, that is to purchase three thousand square feet from the Anderson County Chamber after they build a twelve thousand five hundred square foot building. So, we would purchase three thousand square feet of that space, and we would own our portion at that point. It would be zero lot lined. The other contract that is being discussed is to sell the current property at one-one-five Welcome Lane. And that is, at the top of that contract, you will see J D Auction Company on that contract, because they were the auctioneer for that property.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I know it's a little confusing, so.
Commissioner Isbell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion if we go ahead and approve the sale of the tourism, because that's what came out of operations.
Motion and a second for approving the sale. Commissioner Mays?
I guess I'd like Jay's opinion on the issue, what Commissioner McCamey spoke about, is what was on the agenda in operations, is it, is it considered a failed agenda item if it's not even brought for motion? Or what does that look like versus something that actually had a motion in a second and that went to a vote?
Well, first of all, I agree with Commissioner Isbell. We need to respect our rules, and we've always said, hey, if it goes through a committee, it's vetted, through a committee, and it doesn't pass that committee, then it's dead at that point. However, state law doesn't recognize operations committee. That's not a statutory committee. Technically, county commission could take it up again. And I agree with Robert. I think it's coming via another mechanism here. It's coming through the tourism report that's normally on the consent agenda, and it's been pulled off. It's, that contract's on there also for you to consider. You know, technically, by law, it can be taken up by this committee tonight. But in the future, I think we all need to respect our rules, and that's why we have these vetting committees, and that's why we put so much time in them. I'd hate to get into a position where everything we take to operations that's voted down gets reheard again at county commission. This is a little bit different situation, where you've got something coming out of a subcommittee, tourism council, coming up with a referral to approve. That's not been acted on, that piece, and I think that's what you're bringing forward tonight.
Yes.
Has this been pulled off the consent agenda?
We typically, it's already on the regular agenda, because it's a, it's an item that needs to take action. Usually, we are on the consent agenda, because we're just submitting our minutes, but this is an item that needs action. In fact, when we have items that need action, we are on the regular agenda.
Okay.
In that spirit, though, Mr. Chairman, she made it very clear at oper, at operations that if, if we don't, whatever decision we make in terms of the contract with the chamber will dictate whether or not she wants to sell the property. And so, if you're saying that it's valid to vote on the sale of the contract with the chamber tonight without two-thirds majority and what have you, I feel like that we're going to be here for a long time, because we're, we're doing this a little backwards, I think.
Well, I, I think you're right, because they both go hand in hand. Stephanie mentioned that, hey, if you sell her building, she has nowhere to go. She really doesn't want to sell the building unless she has somewhere to go. And she mentioned that at operations, and I agree with her. It's putting her, if one passes, the other one does not, we're in a jam. You've got, if you sell her current location and then disapprove the purchase of three thousand square foot in the new chamber building, we don't know where she's going to go. And that's a little bit difficult for her, a little bit difficult for our citizens, and all county government operations. Anything else on this issue?
Commissioner Beauchamp.
Tyler kind of alluded to what I was going to ask, and you did, too, but I want to hear from you, Stephanie. If you knew tonight that we were not going to approve you moving to the chamber, and we're going to stick you in an office in the courthouse or permanently in D A R C, wherever we could put you in a county government building, would you not sell the building tonight?
I would request that we do not sell the building tonight, if that's, if that's the case, because that's not a permanent option. I'm not aware of any space at the courthouse. D A R C is not a permanent option, so, yeah, I don't.
Well, I mean, we have space there. You're going to go there for eighty months.
Right, right.
So, we could vote to permanently put you there, but I wanted to hear from you. If you knew that you weren't going to get this new building, it's not going to happen, would you want us to vote to stay where you're at right now?
Correct.
Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, I made this point in the operations committee, because there was a vote after the discussion of the sales agreement to purchase. Then we voted to sell the existing building, but we had not actually voted on the other portion of it. And, and I said, then we've got the cart before the horse. If we don't, you know, if, if the contract's not approved tonight, then I fully intend to vote against selling the building. I just think it makes sense to stay where we're at if we're, I mean, the whole purpose was to get, you know, a thousand dollars a month, I mean, a year, piece of property that we are actually collecting taxes on, and putting a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar piece of property back on the tax rolls. I, I mean, it just, it don't make sense to sell it if we're not going to, you know, go ahead with the contract.
Mr. Chairman, it's actually set up correctly tonight, if you go by the word of God, take up the situation or the issue of purchasing portion of the chamber building first. If that fails, she's already told you, the other issues move, she doesn't want to move. That's in the operations agenda?
Microphone Jay, is there a question?
Is that correct? I think I'm, I'm right on that.
Yes.
So, this is set up correctly as far as the steps. If the purchase of the, a portion of the new chamber building, take that up first, if that fails, then she doesn't want to consider the other option of selling her building. But, um.
Well, we've got a motion now to sell the building, so I guess that's, that's the motion that's on the.
But she's presenting the purchase contract.
I, I know, but we've got.
That's not the issue that's on the floor.
But that's the, that's the motion that got made, so.
You may have a motion to defer, accident until after the other.
Mayor Frank.
I do want to just ask, and maybe this is a Jay question, or, or maybe it's just me speaking to you all as commissioners, there's a couple of considerations on the sale issue. One is that we did not disclose to buyers that any decision on the building was going to be tied to some future agreement for the next location. So, you know, whether there's legal exposure there from the potential bidder, we had a motion, and I'm, I'm sure one of you all has it, that motion was to surplus the building with a minimum bid of six hundred thousand via professional auction company. That happened. The auctioneer lived up to their agreement in their contract with Anderson County. Someone bid on that facility, and so there's no, there was nothing that was, to my knowledge, you know, what's going to happen, what's the timing there? And it doesn't mean that it can't happen, but I don't think that commission has to be up against a wall tonight in this vote to live up to that agreement and to that motion. So, that would be my only concern, whether the potential, whoever this bidder was, comes and says, I'm going to pull a legal trigger on this and file suit. I'm not saying that. And I know that J D's is a, a community member. I don't see them doing that. I can't speak for them, but it sure puts them in a tough position, because they did expend marketing dollars. They abided by Stephanie's request to expedite this sale, and that does create an issue for Anderson County, even if it's not a legal issue, it is a, an integrity issue. And so, I, I put that out there, and it doesn't mean that anybody who would still like to see this agreement move forward. I've expressed at operations committee, I think there are some issues with that agreement. Can they be worked out? I don't know. But I, I just wanted to share that with you as I'm listening to your conversation and how I see things with regard. I, I don't think those two issues are married. If they were married, they should have been disclosed on the front end to anybody who showed up to build on the building or to bid on the building. They should have been disclosed in that agreement, not after the fact, and then it has created this situation for this entire bid process, so.
Thank you. Mayor?
To the mayor's question, I think she's got a good point on the integrity issue. I spoke with Catherine Ashmoleane Purchasing, and if you recall the discussion about this several months ago, we always said that county commission would have to approve that. She said she stipulated that, and our standard terms and conditions say that we have the right to reject all bids. Now, J D, I guess the question to you, sir, was that included? The county commission had to, I wasn't at your sale, but county commission had to approve this. It wasn't what they call drop of the hammer at an auction. It's final. It was subject to county commission approval. Is that correct, sir?
It was, Jay, with the date also, it was also included, which was last month's commission. However, we were able to speak to the buyer and let him know that tonight is going to be the decision. So, to answer your question, yes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you, and certainly the buyer on this, both great companies.
Commissioner Isbell.
Well, really, what I was going to talk about is what the mayor had brought up, and because if you go back and look at all of our procedure through operations and through full commission, we set a, we set a minimum, six hundred thousand, and then even in the tourism. we set a, we set a minimum, 600,000, and then even in the Tourism Board meeting, I think it started out as good news. We've sold our building. That was.
Right. And, and I would like to say too, I mean, from the beginning, everything that we has, we have always presented to you all, to the previous Commission, is we will be pursuing a facility with the Chamber. That has never not been stated. You know, we've never said, we're going to sell this and then who knows where we'll end up. It is all, these two things have always, it's always been understood that these two things go together. And if you look at some of the documentation that was in the June agenda with County Commission, it's also included in this agenda. It was step one, sell the building. Step two, construct a new facility. Step three, relocate. So, that's this document here that has been included in everything that we've done. So, even though, you know, I, I see the two items as being married together, we would not be standing here in front of you trying to sell our building if we did not have a place to go. If that wasn't always in the plan from the very beginning. It was expressed at my board. That was always their understanding. That was always, I believe, you know, what, what I presented to Commission, so. And we've been back and forth about it, but, you know, in June, when County Commission approved to do the con, to sell the current Welcome Center, that was where we were going. So, because we, we had plans to build a facility with the Chamber.
Did you have, have any more, Commissioner Isbell?
No, I'll just, I would like to pull to Steve Mead in respect, respectfully ask to have last say so.
Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just out of curiosity, why is relocating to DARC or somewhere else not a long-term solution?
Because, I mean, our, our plan was to have facilities that we would be able to welcome the public. The DARC building that we're, area that we're looking at is behind the building. There's not a public, you know, really public access. Even though, you know, even though our walk-in traffic requesting tourist information has declined, we have received a lot of requests for meeting space. There's still a need to be accessible to the public. So, we would not want to be in a facility that would not be conducive to having the public come into our facility.
So, in your estimation, the only place in Anderson County would be this new facility?
Yes. Again, we would not even be considering selling our current facility if we were not planning on building a new facility with the Chamber and, and have a central hub for economic development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Varren.
Yes. Being new to this, I see that we, County Commission committed to selling this building. I think we ought to sell it. Looks like everything was set up to buy the building with the Chamber. I'm fine with that, but I think we're really missing a real opportunity here. This building looks like it could have been built back in the seventies, you know? We're not building the building for 2022. We're building the building for 2042, at least, and everything. I think we can go in with negotiations, try to find out the best way to insulate it, possibly put solar panels on it, make it a zero building, something to be proud of, something that other counties might want to come and take a look at. You know? If we get maybe some grants, put in even some car chargers, some of these fast car chargers. I think it would be a, a feature that we can have in the future that'll be necessary. And I think there's a lot of advantages to it. I mean, whenever I was working at Downtown Hardware, I think Ann said that one of their electric bills was like $3,600 a month. And that's a lot of money. You put that in every month for 20 years, you're talking about a big potload of money. You know? So, I mean, even if we've got to go in and add a little bit of money into it from ARP funds or something like that, let's build something that we're proud of, something for the future, something that will draw people into Anderson County, because that's what it's for. It's the, it's for tourism, to bring in tourism and businesses. And I think that's the way, how we should have that way. And I certainly would think it would be a good idea to cover it with paintings, you know, different recreational things in Anderson County and make it a very bright and shiny building, you know, rather than just a box, you know? Well, that's about all.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes, so I sit on Tourism Council. And, you know, from my understanding, just from the, when we were along the process, it was always if we sell our building, it was to purchase and do an agreement with the Chamber to be in the same facility, so, and then obviously had to work that out on, you know, them being a nonprofit, us being a government. But I, that was always the intention of the Chamber, you know, the Tourism Council when we voted on that. And I know that we've talked about that these are not married together, but we sat here last month and that was the whole conversation we had last month, that they, we didn't want to move forward with the purchase of the building until we saw everything, or the sale of the building until we saw a purchase agreement. So, last month they were married. This month, they're not married. So, that's where I guess some of the confusion is because that's, when we asked Stephanie to go back and get this information, it was we didn't want to move forward with the sale of the building. And if, you know, if we don't take up the purchase agreement, I'm, I'm can't sell, look to sell the building neither without having a permanent location for tourism.
Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that the original intent was there was going to be a marriage between these two. And then we went ahead and voted to go ahead and allow an auction of the building you're in now. And now we're hearing there might want to be a separation between the two. I had a fear from the beginning this was going to be a shotgun wedding. I think.
Not on my.
I understand, but.
I'm still ready to go through with it.
I understand, but if I recall correctly, I voted no on that sale because I was worried that we didn't have all the ducks lined up in a row. Here we sit here tonight, and I know we're trying to divide this up between two different issues. And last month I asked for the contract so that I could see it. I read over it. Still a little confused, but the picture was a little bit clearer. And then I watched the meetings, went back and watched those, got a little bit clearer. I was still a little bit confused, but I had phone calls and ran into people from our district who made me feel a little bit better because if I'm confused, they're confused as well. And they still couldn't grasp the idea of what y'all were trying to do. The concerns that I've heard is you've got a county department, per se, tourism, and you've got the Chamber of Commerce, and they're wanting to come together and give a part of a building that's going to take money from tourism to go ahead and build. It's going to be built by Chamber, whether that section's in it or not. Then from watching the meeting of the night, I hear that although the contract says all the lanes have got to be taken care of before closing, now we find out there's lanes.
Right.
That's just too much confusion for me. I'm having, I'm having some serious bad memories from the past and I would rather everything be lined up and in a row before I feel comfortable voting on this tonight. And I understand where you're coming from as far as saying, well, if we're going to cut off the, the Chamber building conjunction with it, then I get you want to keep where you are now. But to the mayor's point, we've already went out on a limb and went through a process and we put our name out there over that. So, now I'm concerned over that as well. What's the right thing to do on that? If we're going to separate them out, then I got a problem with that too. So, I'm probably more concerned tonight than I was last month. And I, I'm not saying that's your fault. I'm just saying the way things have gone. And I think the world of you, knowing you, I think we went to high school together, if I recall. Love Maria, love everybody with the Chamber. I love everybody with tourism. I think they do a great job for, especially the north end of the county. But this is not a simple situation.
Absolutely not, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioner Jaeger.
Thank you. How is the property owned titled? Is it Anderson County Government or Anderson County Tourism?
The property we have now?
Yes.
Anderson County Government.
Okay, so this is not tourism's property. This is the county government's property?
Well, there is some debate, there is some information too concerning that. I know there's been some questions about that. It was bought with tourism funds. It was paid for by tourism funds. So, therefore, any proceeds from the sale would be designated to the tourism fund because of the way that it was bought and paid for.
All right.
So, even though it has.
Want to make sure who the owner of this property is.
Every facility in this county, every school, and as far as I know, even is dated as Anderson County Government.
Okay.
So, that's why we're here tonight, for Anderson County Government, to approve the sale of it.
I just, I, I knew that was the case, but tourism is, keep saying we?
Right.
It's, it's not tourism's property?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's county property.
At what point did the knowledge of the scope of tourism's joint venture with the Chamber come in? Because it, it seems a lot larger than the way I remember the, the progress.
Well, if you go back to my meeting minutes in January 2022, that was the original motion, was to, was to sell our facility and then enter into a new facility with the Chamber. So, yes, we have, they did not own property at that time. They have since bought property. I believe that was in May. And then we have met with architects to design the facility, look at what that would encompass and what that could involve. And so that process has come along.
I, I, I think co-locating chambers and tourism's a good thing. I think 3,000 square feet was something that I wasn't aware of until later in this process. And that's where I have heartburn, is the size and, and expense of that.
Commissioner Mays.
To clear up one issue, I, I had a long conversation Friday with CTS in terms of whose money is this when the property sells? Per CTS, and this was my understanding, but per CTS as well, is that money, when sold, would come back to the county and Robbie would either receive it into a general fund, revenue code, or a capital project fund? It would be up to this board through a budget amendment to move that money to tourism. So, that is the opinion that I got on Friday. Furthermore, I keep, you know, I think a lot of this, and I, I just want to, I don't want to speak on behalf of the quote-unquote new commissioners. We've heard this now for three, four months. We're, you know, we are new, but, you know, at some point, you know, we're not. And we didn't live in a, in a bubble between now and the election. Things change. Elections change. There's seven new people up here. You're looking at seven different people. So, you're looking at seven different opinions. Just because a previous commission entered into something doesn't mean that I agree with it. And doesn't mean that I'm going to sit up here and move forward with something just because a previous commission did that. And two, for, a lot of the confusion for me is this has been conjecture really for a long time. We just into the December Operations Meeting, got some stuff to really look at. And I felt like that as contentious and as big as this issue is, I would have probably liked to have more time again. This has been something that's been brought up. But as far as us new commissioners, I believe November was the first time it's come before us. And there was absolutely just a blank sheet of paper. And so we had no information to operate off of. But again, a, and they may want to confirm, you know, Jay may want to confirm with CTS, but Kaylee at CTS on Friday was very confident in her opinion that, and she spoke, she said she spoke to legal, that when we sell that building, that it would go into a general fund, either revenue or she recommended a capital project fund. And then the only way that money would go to tourism is if this board entertained a budget amendment and transferred said funds to tourism.
Well, when we came before purchasing to surplus the property, that, that question was brought up as far as where the funds go. And I believe at that time Robbie had talked with the auditors and, and their question was, well, how was it paid for? And it was paid for by tourism funds. And then that would, it would go back to the tourism fund. So, that was the, that was a premise that I have been operating under this whole entire time. And I spoke with Robbie and Jay both today and they both confirmed that information for me from, from communication that they had with our auditors. And, I mean, Jay, am I, is there anything you'd like to say to that?
Thank you, Tyler. This is what was discussed with our auditor some time ago and they said it needed to be deposited in the special revenue code for tourism. That opinion that you got, I don't know if I'd even call it an opinion. When I hear the word opinion, I think of a legal opinion, but it didn't come from legal. And I can get you one. That's no problem at all. I promise to get a legal opinion for the mayor also, but I can check with CTS and they're easy to work with and they'll be glad to help. But I think that came from our field rep in this area, Kaylee. She's been here a couple of years, really nice lady. But that's not a legal opinion, but we can get a legal opinion.
Well, it's more than what we've received as a commission thus far.
Absolutely. But back in, what was it, spring when this came up? Robbie approached the auditors with it from the comptroller and they felt like it needed to be deposited back to a tourism code. That's what I know, but I'll get to the bottom of it for you, sir. And we'll find out one way or the other. If this does pass, sale goes through, then we'll get it right. I promise you that.
And last thing, Mr. Chairman, was just the final conversation and she pointed me to statute. And I guess I want to make sure, being new, that y'all can read over me again, but I'm pretty confident in what the statute said, that tourism dollars are not just for the promotion of tourism or marketing, that it's also about tourism development. And specifically when I asked about that, she talked about capital-type projects. For example, if there's a specific area that is tourism, lacking tourism, or you all want to emphasize some dollars, for example, David Hall Cabin in District One, if tourism wants to put some money in that area or what have you, then that could be the same, could be used as well, not just, you know, not just for marketing purposes.
Yes, tourism development is described in 674-1401 in the TCA Code as means the acquisition and construction of and financing and retirement of debt for facilities related to tourism. The only stipulation as far as, we are, we have in the past worked with our agencies in the county to do tourism development. And one of the stipulations, I believe, that's set forth by this county is it has to be a 501(c)(3). It has to be organized as a 501(c)(3). But we have done those things in the past already.
Yeah.
I believe right now we have about $25,000 designated in our budget for those kind of projects.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Listening to the discussion and reading through the agenda material pretty carefully tonight, and there's quite a bit there, but it looks to me that everything has been approved by Commission step by step, pretty much. I think the contract is very detailed. It spells out, and to my satisfaction, that the issues we had talked about in the past are, are dealt with in the contract. I'm assuming the law director has reviewed the contract?
He actually constructed the contract.
And, you know, I, I just, I'm not sure I'm seeing what the problem is. I understand the issue with Operations about whether it should come. I understand the issue with operations, about whether it should come here to be voted on if it was not approved in operations, but, you know, I think someone's done a very good job of spelling things out, and we probably, I think we need to move on with it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Isbell, do you want to-
I do.
Say the last word?
Yeah, and part of this was, I was going to make statements about why it didn't even get a motion out of operations, and part of it was about, you know, free from encumbrances and how it's going to be paid for, and then how the chamber part was going to be paid for, it was going to be paid for to anonymous donors that had stipulations. And then just last week, the same thing happened over in Knoxville, and they have a chancellor's opinion on this, and this chancellor, John Weaver, has ruled Knoxville City officials are subject to questioning under oath by Knoxville News as part of our ongoing lawsuit against the city over Mayor India Kincaid's secretive search early this year to hire a new police chief. Weaver's ruling issued this past week is notable, discovery which includes ability to question people under oath or ask for relevant documents is not often granted in open record cases, but it happens on rare occasions, especially when there's a question about whether public officials are acting in good faith when they deny an open records request. We are sure Kincaid, Kincaid's administration is not acting in good faith in this case that tries to secure public documents about the police search by hiding them in the hands of private party. The police's executive research form, the firm that helped Knoxville conduct its search, why should you care of this, let your reasons, if you care about accountability and transparency from the people you elect to serve you? Private firms shouldn't be used to hide public work. If the city gets away with farming out key or controversial work, private business, there's zero accountability to the public on meeting the most important functions. Problems should be kept. Kincaid's, Kincaid's administration even asked private citizens who helped the chief selections to sign non-disclosure agreements, a stunning display of contempt for transparency. So that's another thing that raised a red flag to me, is that, you know, we're going to have people that pay for it, but they want to, you know, non-disclosure with stipulations that, you know, we don't know what those stipulations are. So that's a problem I have with transparency, but that's for the other argument if it gets through this motion.
Motion is to sell the building. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess one of the benefits of being the old guys, you get to see a lot of different things. I don't see any of the commissioners here as newbies. I see you all as commissioners, and I think you do bring fresh ideas to the table, and that's why I'm sure you're voted in, and I appreciate that, so. You know, it's kind of odd that we hear things, and the mayor brought up a good point, but as I sit here and I listen to the thought of a potential lawsuit, and she said "potential", from the potential buyer of the building, I think back to those bad decisions us old commissioners made on 205 Main. How many times did we sell that building? We sold it twice. How many lawsuits do we have? None. When you have an auction, it's the right of the seller to take it or not. There's nothing secretive that was done in this process. We did everything procedurally correct, as has been pointed out by many. I guess where I'm at with this, if I'm going to be asked to vote whether to sell the building in this motion, I'm looking for a different solution. I'm looking for something that, kind of like the building you ended up with in the first place, that we'd like to sell now. You know, you approached us, if I remember correctly, I may have it backwards, we funded it, you paid it back, you being the tourism board, through revenue from the hotel motel tax.
It was, it was part of a note, so we made payments.
Correct, and you paid it off.
Yes.
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 You know, so I ask myself, why can't we do that in this situation? Why do we have to sell the building? I don't understand that piece, and I understand the theory is, you're going to take the cash, but again, you sell the building, if it's voted on, then you're going to move somewhere and stay there for a period of time. I suspect the period of time will be longer than what we think, because getting building products and contractors is a pretty big trick nowadays, and for us to sit here and say it's going to be done by 2024 or whatever, I mean, we're all guessing. Maybe it will, maybe it won't, but I, in the meantime, tourism is in limbo during that process. So for me, from a business perspective, it makes sense for you to stay where you're at. We keep the building. We fund the new building with proceeds from the tourism revenue, the hotel motel tax. I mean, I don't know what your budget is, I haven't got that deep, but I do know that the revenue looks to be about $700,000 this year, if it comes in the way it looks like it's coming in. That's just on the hotel motel tax.
It's about 570 is projected.
Okay, well, I think it was already at that when I looked at it through October, but I may be wrong, you'll know better than me.
Well, you're looking, you're maybe looking for January through October, but we're talking about July through June.
And you'll know better than me, I'm not going to debate you on that. But I understand the need for the chamber, the tourism, and the Anderson County development, and I may be saying that wrong, if I am, I apologize, economic development, CETA. I understand the need to have them all three together to help grow our businesses and have meeting space, and I'm not opposed to that. How we get there is what I'd like to know. So for me, Mr. Chairman, if I'm going to have to vote on this motion, the way it's presented, to sell the building with nothing else knowing, other than we might vote on agreement later, I'm going to vote no. Not because I'm against the tourism, but because I still think we can fund it in a way, I don't, I'd like to see Stephanie stay where she's at until the new building is completed. I mean, and one other thing I want to say, because I'm sure some of the other commissioners got emails and calls and whatnot, but no one on this board here is wanting to shut down the tourism. No one here is putting handcuffs on you and saying, you know, you're not doing a good job. No one's saying that. What we're debating is how we fund that.
Sure.
You know, so I think we fund it like you did the first time, out of the hotel motel tax. We enter another agreement like we did back then, and, you know, it's five, 10 years, whatever the number is, and then maybe we can give the first right of refusal on the sale of the building when it is completed to the gentleman that put the bid on the first place, and maybe we can honor that price he put it in. I don't know, I'm not a realtor and I can't get into all that stuff, so that was just some ideas, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Foster.
Just question, clarification, we wanted to amend this, make an amendment to this motion to take up the contract first? Is that, I mean, I know we can amend the, but because it's a sale contract, can this be amended to take that up first? Do you prefer this one?
You can make a motion to defer this motion that's on the floor. We have a motion and second on the floor. You can make a motion to defer action until after we take up the sales contract.
I'll make that motion.
You got a motion to defer the sale of the building motion until after we-
Take up the-
Take up the contract, okay. Do I have a second? I guess probably can't over that. Got a motion by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner McCamey. All those in favor of the deferral motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Raise your hand if you voted no. So I got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so we got eight. Eight yes, so that fails, I guess, okay. All right. Commissioner McCamey.
I'll for the question on the-
Oh, okay. Commissioner, all right. Let's go to the-
I have a second and a vote.
To vote on the-
To call a question.
Call the question, do we have a sec? Well, any other discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote.
Could you restate the motion, please?
To sell, to finalize the bid that we received, the $630,000 bid.
To accept it.
Yes, yeah, to accept.
So essentially just sell the facility.
Sell the building, yeah. Confirming the sale. Let's go to the board and vote. Seven yes, eight no, motion fails. Do we have any other? Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the sales contract as presented by the tourism council.
Approve the contract for the, with the chamber?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Smallridge, any discussion? Commissioner-
Can you repeat that? I'm not sure I follow that one. You want to approve the chamber agreement, is that what that motion is?
Approve, you're talking about the tourism-
Purchase and sale agreement as presented by the tourism council, which is to enter into the contract with the chamber.
Commissioner Isbell.
Well, I tell you what, I bet you people at home think, what in the world's going on? Because we just argued for an hour, and it was said that if this fails, that's it. If it fails, we're not going to enter into an agreement, because the whole thing for six, seven, eight months, we've been talking about how it's going to be paid for, it's going to be paid for by the sale. You know, and here we are, we're going to jump, there's nothing even in writing about this. I mean, to me, I just, I don't understand that, with all respect.
Commissioner Bochamp.
Stephanie, one more time, it failed. What do you want us to do? How do you want us to vote right now, because we just voted not to sell the building?
You have, I mean, there has to be one with the other. This contract, my desire is for this contract to pass, that we enter to agreement with the chamber, and then my desire is to, after that passes, to sell the building. I mean, I'm just being honest, that's all I can stand up here and do. I mean, that is the direction of my board, who's represented here this evening by our executive committee, that is my desire, is to approve a contract with the chamber and then to approve the sale of the facility.
Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Frank, and Jay may answer this too, but the contract as presented that is on the board, on the floor tonight, I know that, Mayor, you had mentioned you have issues with the contract. I know it doesn't close until, I think it was June of 2024, but those contracts would be signed within how many days from tonight? I mean-
I've told the mayor, if it does pass, that I'd get her a legal opinion, she had a couple of issues on that, but any of the contingencies that's itemized in that purchase contract have to be taken care of before it closes. Was it June 24th?
June 2024.
Okay. It has to be taken care of.
Yes, sir.
We didn't put down any earnest money on that at all, it's zero, so if they're not taking care of whatever it is, then we walk away free and clear.
Right, I think my question is, Jay, is, as presented, and I know the contingencies we talked about, such as the lien, the chamber's going to take care of-
Yes.
What have you?
That's what we've heard.
I think there were other issues, and maybe the mayor can speak to it, but that would maybe prevent her from signing the contract.
Right.
Where does that put them? I mean, if the contract as presented gets approved tonight, she does not want to sign the contract and elects not to sign the contract, where are we at?
Well, I don't like to say this, but 81 Act would allow the chairman and Robbie to bind the county. I don't like that, I want the mayor on board on all these things, so I'll get her opinion expeditiously. And what she had concerns about was the bidding, are we circumventing the bidding of a capital project, and we'll take care of that one way or the other. If this does pass, just follow it up with a contingency that it's going to have, she's going to have to be satisfied with my opinion. And if I, I told her, I said, I'll get some from CTAAS, she doesn't want my word on it, but we'll make her satisfied, I want her to sign it if she will, but we'll take care of her issues one way or the other. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I-
She's got legitimate questions, and we'll get her an answer for it.
That was pretty much a summary, Commissioner Mays, so what we're doing is we're, this would be executed following approval by commission, so all of, because it is a sales contract, it's setting the closing date into the future, but nevertheless, it is a contract that will be presented to all of the signatories, which I think that the draft I have here is Robbie, myself, Josh Anderson is the chairman, and those are my issues, are we're agreeing to a building that does not yet exist. So as I expressed at Operations Committee, to me, just in my time in government, it looks like we're agreeing to work to be performed and materials, and we're putting that in the hands of the Chamber of Commerce, where if this was, we're talking about, so when this discussion started, it started as the chamber would build, then tourism would buy. Now we're agreeing on the front end to a construction contract, but we're talking about owning and using county funds to do a county facility, but we're putting the architect, the management, the construction materials, all of that in the hands of the Chamber of Commerce. And then my other concerns that are not mentioned here, but have been mentioned verbally, were these non-disclosure agreements regarding the construction. Well, when you get into non-disclosure agreements, what is that getting us into as the county? What, are there going to be certain requirements? Is it going to be about something, you know, as simple as how you access the facility? Could it be how it's named? Are there going to be requirements for activities that will take place? I mean, there are a lot of things that, that's what I was alluding to at the very beginning of my conversation, you know, it doesn't mean not approving it, you all could still work on it, but as it stands now, I think there are a lot of issues with it that need to be answered. And I'm sure, even under the 81 Act, I'm not going to speak for Robbie, but when we're talking about using county funds, and then we're not having transparency for how we choose a bidder, I mean, how we choose a contractor and all of those things, you know, we would need that legal opinion, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let the record reflect, vice chair has the gavel at this point. Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question, so we did not sell the building, how are we going to pay for a new building with the current motion that's on the floor?
Are we wanting to answer? Commissioner Palmer, go ahead, sir.
The person who voted in the majority could ask for a motion to reconsider that earlier motion.
Two-thirds, they're taking two-thirds.
Not to reconsider. A motion to reconsider just has to be someone who voted with the prevailing side. So anybody that voted no could make the motion to reconsider, and I'd be glad to do that if this motion passes.
Mr. Palmer, does that answer your question?
That didn't answer Commissioner Palmer's question.
Not really.
I'll try, but there's a variety of meanings, and you heard Commissioner Wondell mention it, you know, there could be a no, low-interest note. She brings in 580, 600,000 a year, she could pay it off in a short time, couple different ways that way, but that's keeping the property at welcome lane and buying a new property. But there's loan options there if we have to do it, and who knows, by the time it's built, she may have the money in her reserve code at that time, but those, I hope that helps you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the first time I've actually got to play chess directly with Commissioner McCamey. And I've always said that county commission is like a chess game, because you're always playing for the next meeting. Now what we're doing is we're turning this thing completely around. We started out with the, first we said, we have to sell before we can enter into this agreement. Well, we didn't sell, so now we're trying to take it back around, but there's so- we're trying to take it back around. But there's so many things, reasons why. It didn't even get a motion out of operations, as one was the procedure. Because first, we had Catherine Ashmary come up and said, you know, if this is a county building, you got to have quotes. You, you, there's so many things you got to go by, or we're going to be in trouble. Do we want to find him? I mean, it's, it's not a question of that.
When, when we discussed the procurement process during the operations...
Well, hold on a second. I'm about to, excuse me. So now we're going back to how, we got to go back. Before, the, the big argument was, we needed to see something in writing and writing and writing. So now we're actually changing it and we're going to go back. Now, what if we approve this, then it goes back and it fails to sale? I mean, that, it, it's just too convoluted. I, I think that there really needs to be another agreement made up. And why can't the Chamber go ahead and build the building with the space and then Tourism could lease it? I mean, there's, you know, the biggest thing is a meeting room because everybody, all the emails that we've got says that we don't need to be at the interstate anymore. We don't have walk-in traffic. Everything's, most of it's digital. But it's all about a meeting place. Even in the drawings, it's about the meeting place. So why can't the Chamber go ahead and build it? And then we'll lease space from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I'm a checkers player, not chess. Take it easy on me. Commissioner McCamie.
I already answered the question.
All right. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve the contract between Tourism and the Chamber. Any further discussion? Here are none. Go to the board and vote. Motion fails. The record reflect, Vice Chair hands the gavel back to the chairman. Thank you, Vice Chairman Vowell. Next, we'll move on to committee reports. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, I voted no, and I want Stephanie to know why. It's because there's no funding attached to that agreement. It is my hope that we'll have another meeting at some point in the future with it more clearly laid out. And I'm hoping, Mr. Chairman, that we can use the funds from the hotel motel tax like we did before and proceed that way. And I, and I look forward to seeing Stephanie again at the podium. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Palmer.
I have another question. Thank you. Would it be prudent, and maybe this may be a motion, I'm not sure, but should we have a subcommittee of some sort to evaluate the changing needs of Tourism? How it's changing from walk-in, welcome-centered foot traffic to a digital presence? How that affects Anderson County and Anderson County Tourism? And then, and look at all these things that we've been spending the last hour and a half talking about, answering those questions, having a committee of, say, five commissioners, including the mayor, the tourism director, and pounding some of these things out and coming back to, to this committee with some proposals where, maybe where she could relocate? Or what, is that prudent?
How many commissioners do we have on Tourism Council?
We have two commissioners and the mayor. And I, I mean, respectfully, I would suggest that we already have that committee. This is a, the Anderson County Tourism Council is a committee of commission. It is, it is by resolution, is by private act that we are established. So...
You have 20, 20 members?
We have 20 members.
And two commissioners?
And two commissioners. We have a county mayor. We have a representative from every city. We have a representative from all three chambers, and then the remaining members are from the tourism industry. And our meetings are public. They, and we welcome all input. But ultimately, just like in this situation, every decision that we recommend has to have final approval by commission. So they always have that input. I would just not want to circumvent what our, our board is already tasked with doing, which is evaluating these situations. You know, I present information to them every quarter that talks about our visitation. It talks about our traffic on the website, talks about our digital advertising and all of our performance. And that's what we're evaluating. This was the recommendation that we brought to you. So I think we would be duplicating efforts. I think we would be coming back around and doing exactly what we've done. That was the recommendation by my board, was to relocate and to look at a facility that could accommodate a meeting space. So, I mean, I, I, I respect what you're requesting.
So if we have some questions and we have some suggestions and we have, you may be thinking outside of the box, some totally different things that do not include building a, a brand-new facility, we would bring that to...
Yes, yes.
To your board.
Absolutely. And our board meets January, the second Tuesday in January. I don't know that off the top of my head, but...
And I know...
Every commissioner is always welcome.
Okay. And I agree with what Commissioner Yeager had said earlier. I'm kind of getting this an us-them kind of feel. And we need to all be doing what's best for Anderson County.
Absolutely. That's always...
And so that's, we need a place to where all of these things can be addressed. The building, the, the problems with the existing building, places, other places in Anderson County that could hold a board meeting. You know, I'm having a hard time spending a million dollars just to have meetings.
Sure.
You know, just all of these things that we've talked about, we need to have a place to be able to, the commissioners, since you're asking us to make decisions, we need to be fully informed on those things.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And like I said, all of our meetings are, are open to the public. They're printed on the calendar. We present our quarterly report after our board meeting. So we, we definitely welcome any input and suggestions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Varren.
Yeah, since we're not going to sell the building, you're going to be stuck in there for a couple of years, it looks like. How much of that 200,000 that you have set aside for repairs do you think you'll need to spend?
Well, we, I will be meeting with my board in January, and that will be something that we will be looking at. We already need to replace the roof. And doing that, there will be some logs that need to be replaced. And through this process, we have found out that we have termites. So railing and some other wood on the building will need to be replaced. And then the parking lot needs to be resurfaced. There's, there's some items that we already have a list of, that we were waiting for this decision to be made as to whether or not we proceed. So our board, I will present that to our board in January, and then they'll bring those recommendations in that process back here.
So because we canceled the, the sale, it's going to cost us a good amount of money, but we don't know how much yet.
Exactly. And we have $200,000 budgeted at this point and reserved for capital projects.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know. I mean, last, we looked at restaining the building, stripping it and restraining it. That was about $30,000. I've received quotes of anywhere from 30 to $50,000 on estimates to replacing our roof. It would just depend on once they get in there to see how much wood has rotted, to see what wood needs to be replaced when they replace the roof, the metal roof. So it's, we've been there for 24 years. So it's, it's time. So those are some items that we just held off on, you know, discussed with my board on holding off on those until we decide what we're going to do. But if we're staying, then we will make those needed repairs.
Commissioner Isbell.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In answer to Commissioner Palmer, what you can do is you can bring it to operations and we can fully discuss it, and then we can give a recommendation to the Tourism Board.
Okay.
You know, the things that we've had. Because let me tell you, that's why we have committees to discuss this, instead of just coming up here and just making a decision, you know, in just a few minutes. But it's always good to hear from more people. The commissioners are the ones that are elected and answer to the people of Anderson County. So I think it's very important to have that.
And I have had some constituents reach out to me and give good suggestions, that I would like for that, those suggestions to be given thought and consideration.
And we, and we have an open-door policy. I'm, I'm more than happy to talk with you about anything specific or come to operations too and talk to the operations committee.
When we built the jail, we had all kinds of committees, work committees, and, and it was very extensive. And, and we came out, we prevailed on that because we had so many commissioners working on it, so many workshops, and so many people coming to the meetings. So, but it's a good idea.
Commissioner Bochamp.
I'm with Commissioner Palmer. We should do a subcommittee. I get that you have a board, but I've, as the newbie, I have watched county government for a very long time, and I know how it operates. And I don't understand, if you want us to sell a building and build you a new one, why you would oppose a subcommittee, when we've done it for the jail, we've done it for juvenile court, we've done it for many...
Sure. Well, I mean...
Hang on.
I'm sorry.
We've done it for many other places that are wanting to build. And I think it would be good if you had some commissioners, maybe some of your board members, the mayor, Jay, whoever, on this subcommittee, so we could do a detailed plan. Because I'm not comfortable with the contract that was presented to me Wednesday. I, I think it's bogus. I, I don't like it. I'm with the mayor on a lot of things. There's a lot of questions. I think it was put together very quickly because we asked last meeting to put something together. We don't need to rush. So if you want us to do it, I don't see why you would oppose a subcommittee meeting.
Well, at this point in time, to be honest with you, I don't know what direction our board will go. I don't know that they will recommend building a, a new building or they will recommend selling our building again. I don't know. So I think we're, we might be putting the cart a little bit before the horse at this point. So again, I welcome to invite all of you all to our January meeting. It'll be on the calendar. And you can hear the discussion there and then see how we move forward. So, but without, without the...
If you all move forward with the sale and want us to go back through the motions, I would like for us to have a subcommittee meeting so we can figure this out right and do it right for the citizens of Anderson County. Not for Tourism, not for us, for the citizens.
Just one quick thing. This is the second go-around on selling a Tourism building and merging, because we talked about, I think there's only four commissioners here. If you remember that we were looking about buying the building behind Tourism and...
But that wasn't going to be a joint facility. That would just have been for Tourism.
Yeah, we talked about it. It could be.
That would just have been for the Tourism office.
Yeah. Because that has been a long-range goal of Tourism and Chamber, to put something together, to be together. But it just didn't fall, fall that way. But this is the second go-around, and Commissioner White will probably remember Commissioner Creasy sitting in the same chair and talking about it.
Thank you. Anything else for Stephanie? Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Let's take a 10-minute recess, give everybody a chance to clear out.
Get your bands.
Yep.
Committee reports will start with purchasing report by the Finance Director, Robbie Holbrooke.
Thank you. Under contracts approved by the Law Director, there are two. One's the state grant, or is a grant for Tennessee Tourism Hospitality Recovery Fund Grant, a five-year grant for one hundred and sixty-three, three fifty-seven, twenty-five, and Lexia Learning Systems for the Board of Education, a three-year grant. Cost is forty-six, two-hundred. Both have been approved by the Law Director.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. I guess, uh, Mark Commissioner McCamey absent, I believe he did step out for the evening.
We got a little bit of staying on this.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay, under other business, in the month of November, we brought this to the purchasing agenda. It was deferred to the next month for the land at one thirty-five Earquoyes Lane in Clinton, the starting bid at fifteen thousand. Commissioner Mays made a motion to approve with final sale amount contingent upon purchasing committee and county commission approval. And Commissioner Denenberg seconded the motion. I need a motion from the county commission for that also.
Motion from Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Thirteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Thank you. And under old business, just for information purposes, the winning bid amounts, we had several surplus vehicles in November, and all started at two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, and we ended up with a winning bid, seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars received for those bids, for those vehicles.
Did you need a motion on that?
No, I do have, I'm sorry, I left one thing out. The two thousand and eleven Ford Crown Victoria that donating to the City of Norris, that needs to be approved also.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Oh, no, okay.
Sorry.
You okay with that?
Overlooked that.
Making that, we got a motion, Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Uh, Commissioner Mays.
Robbie, real quick, do you know, uh, are all of these drug fund vehicles, are they most general fund? Do you know?
Well, one of them was Fleet Services. I don't know that. If they were drug fund, that money could go back into the drug fund, but if not, it goes into the general fund.
I was just curious if you knew.
I will ask Catherine to make sure that we get that received correctly.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, that's all I have for the purchasing agenda.
Commissioner Isbell.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I got, I did push my report to speak.
Oh.
On the other motion, the reason why I voted no is it's nowhere, the fifteen thousand, it's nowhere near or close to the appraisal from the county on the property. So that's why I voted no.
Okay, thank you.
That is the starting bid, just like the vehicles. Hopefully, we'll get a whole lot more for that property than fifteen thousand, but, and county commission does have approval
That's correct.
in the end. Okay, if no other questions, I'll move into the finance, I mean, to the budget agenda portion of the cash and fund balance report ending November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The general fund, total fund balance sixteen million, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eight, cash twelve million, one fifty-nine, seven sixty-one for the general purpose school funds. Fund balance thirteen million, one thirty-nine, seven fourteen, cash fourteen million, five eighty-four, two seventy-nine. And since we had a topic of discussion tonight, tourism fund, total fund balance six hundred and six thousand, one twenty-one, and cash seven-ten, one forty-five. Be happy to answer any questions about the fund balance report. Okay, sales tax for the month of October, we pretty much broke even with the two thousand and twenty-one October at three million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, five fifty-nine. The general fund portion, or Anderson County portion, was up five thousand dollars, pretty much the same, breaking even. So that's where we're at on the sales tax report, unless you have any questions. Okay, budget amendments. Group two appropriations by the school, there was one for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. Group four appropriations, non-school, there are six of them, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, seeking approval as a group. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. And group five transfers, non-school, there is one transfer from the Circuit Court Clerk that affects payroll for ten thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, that's all I have for the budget agenda. We had a really short meeting this month, unless you all have any questions for me.
That was because Commissioner White chaired it for us.
That's, yeah, he did a good job. If not, may all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. All right, next up, we've got Director of Schools, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to come before this commission. Just a few things, uh, we, uh, it was really great that you all took time to support the Anderson County and their football team. Thank you for that. It was really nice, and, and the board won't thank you for letting them be a part of that. So thank you for that joint resolution. Uh, just a few things that, I, I try to do this at, uh, at this meeting and just go over a few things, but all of our schools at this time of year, and they do it all throughout the year, but this time of year, they really and truly give back to the, to the community. And I've got four pages, and I won't read all of them, but just, just a few things. Uh, they did over four hundred Angel Tree, uh, the schools did. They raised money for the Isaiah House. They raised money for, uh, for different projects, uh, out in the community, like haircuts for, uh, they raised money for, uh, Thanksgiving meals, for Christmas meals, for, for different students in their own school. One school, uh, did twenty-five students in their own school. Uh, they had different school groups and athletic teams to work food pantries, deliver groceries, work for second harvest. They refereed Little League games. They visited retirement homes. They worked in hospitals, volunteer for parades, after-school events. Uh, they, they did over, one group did over a thousand can food drive. Uh, they worked with the, uh, Island Ford Church and Rocky Top to provide foods for needy families. Uh, it, it just goes on and on, and I am so proud of them. Uh, they made costumes, uh, for kids that couldn't do things for, that couldn't do, uh, the trick-or-treating. They made costumes and give them out to kids. And it just goes on and on. They partnered with local churches to make sure that, uh, students had gifts at Christmas. So our schools, uh, we talk about sometimes the, the way schools, districts, uh, uh, push their children to do things. And I think in Anderson County, we, we push our kids to be good, community-minded adults, and, and to give back to the community. And, and I think you saw just a little bit of that tonight. When you put that many teenage boys in a room, and they are very well respectful, and they do a great job, and when they talk to you, it's yes, sir, no, sir, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am. And so, so I think that's something, we always talk about test scores, but that's something really to be proud of when you, when they give back to others and they help others in the community. So, uh, I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Dr. Parrott, when is, uh, principal for a day happening this next few months? Or did I miss it already?
I, that.
You missed the cut.
I think you missed, I think you missed the cut. I, I don't think, uh, that is done through the Education Foundation, and I don't know if they put that on the agenda this year, or what they did with that, but I will, I will look into that.
You have a hairnet? Maybe you could put him in the cafeteria for a day.
Yeah, yeah. Listen, Mr. Jaeger, anytime you want to come to one of our schools, just call me. I got a, I got a badge you can get us in any one of them, okay?
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with Dr. Parrott. We do have, uh, exemplar of students and what they do, because I even get comments from outside the area. Even at the Veterans Breakfast, they talk about how our students come together to help and, and just doing things, and why don't they do it? Because they want to.
Yes.
Uh, but that's the thing. And then going back to all the resolutions, I gotta give credit to Jay Jaeger. I mean, he worked all weekend, and this is one of those weekends he really put the hours in. I think he started at four o'clock maybe this morning or something like that, finishing them up, but he and his crew, they did a great job.
Did a great job. Yes.
Commissioner Mays.
Uh, this, Dr. Parrott, uh, for, as we continue on, I, I wanna maybe get on the agenda one night, um, whether it be in operations or anything, but to talk about the plan of, I know with, uh, the new legislation with third grade about those certain metrics that get held back, if they don't go to summer school, what have you. Just really curious to hear, um, what the schools' plans are for that, and if there's any chance of, uh, maybe fi, any chance of that being repealed or anything like that at the state level.
I, I, I would hope so. We've got a lot of people working on it. We've got things in place that I think we can take care of the students that need that extra support. We already do that now, but we know really and truly, third grade's too late. If you're gonna retain a student, it needs to be in kindergarten or first grade to really see any type of positive outlook on that. It, like you say, third grade, when you do that, it, it's really too late, so.
Yeah, and I would just encourage everybody, when you're talking to, this may not be popular say, but I just think that's a very, very, very bad bill.
It is.
And I think, uh, considering what some of the youth in this county go through, uh, sometimes their first meals when they get back to school on Monday.
Yes.
Uh, they're going from foster home to foster home, and, and we're expecting them to meet a certain metric on a test. Um, yeah, it's just really unfortunate. But I'd just be curious to know kind of what the game plan is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Dave. Merry Christmas, you all.
Merry Christmas.
We'll wait, we've got something else. Would the mayor's working with us to help with that problem?
Mayor Frank.
All right, um. The first action item, I'm requesting a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-three oh-one-nine-seven-four. Um. This is a resolution authorizing Anderson County to apply for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three Community Development Block Grant, CV Addressing Food Insecurity, application with funds up to the amount of five hundred thousand. This is a zero-match requirement. We do have to have a public hearing, advertise that, uh, and then have this resolution of approval. Uh, Paula Sellers, uh, who is the Director of Student Services, was here. Uh, Dr. Parrott allowed her to go home, and he can help answer any questions if you have questions about this particular grant application.
Motion is second. Commissioner Foster.
And this would not keep us from applying for, this is a CDBG grant that's just for this, does it?
Yes, yes. So I did inquire about that, because we do have an existing, uh, waterline grant that's still ongoing, and the normal CDBG rules are, if you've got one that's, one that's open, you can't apply again until that one's closed. For this food insecurity grant, that does not apply. So we were free to apply. Does have to go through the county, though, but the school will be, uh, operating this, and they do great work there.
Any other discussion? And is this, is this specifically just only for Title I schools, or would this be countywide for, if it's?
What we're looking at is, we've already got the infrastructure in place, and it will be for anybody that's hungry. It, it will be, uh, what we're hoping to do is to, uh, it's kind of like torch where they can, we can have them, uh, at a central location, uh, even looking at buying a food truck to where we can go out to the neighborhoods when we're off, uh, and feed them that way, uh, where we can have money to buy the boxes, the pre-made boxes. So if there is a time where we're out of school for a couple of days, or there's a long holiday, we can have distribution centers. You know, when COVID was doing that, we had a lot of our stores and, and our, our community leaders, they would let us put those boxes at the stores, and when people come in, they could get them. And we did that all over our, all over Anderson County. So that, that's part of this. It's to buy, it really is to buy more infrastructure, to buy, we need to do this, we're gonna need some big, uh, coolers and things like that. And then our, uh, employees that are there, our social workers and people like that, they'll be the ones that will help do that. So there won't be any money spent on, uh, on wages and things like that. So it'll all go to, out to the community. And I, I wanted to thank the mayor. She sent it to us and said, hey, will you look into this? And, and they were kind of, oh, this is gonna be so great. So they, uh, Ms. Sellers really take it, and she ran with it, so.
Yes. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Merry Christmas, Dr. Parrott. Uh, the next item is, um, I'm required to enter into the minutes, the order of appointing John Stare to the Powell Clinch Utility District with a term expiring twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. That is in your packet. Um, if I could get a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
And then the last request I have for you is Kathy Brown has been, and I, I meant to look up before the meeting how long she has served on our ACDA board, uh, but she is retiring. She's gonna step away, and, um, I am requesting confirmation of the appointment of Ernie Bowles to the Anderson County Economic Development Association with a term expiring nine, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
And that is all I have, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, just wanted to make a couple of comments, uh, to you and the Conservation Board. Uh, Claxton Kids Palace looks phenomenal. Uh, it's been stained, it's been new mulch repaired and painted, and I just want to say thank you. Looks great. Also noticed, driving by yesterday, I think it was, Gibbs Ferry Park, and saw the new fishing dock, I guess it is, there.
Yes, uh, yep. Ben has been doing a great job with the Conservation Board, so all, all credit goes to him on both of those projects. Well, the board authorizes it, but yes.
No, but I just want to thank you guys and Ben and anybody involved, so thanks, thanks a lot.
Yes. And, um, and since you mentioned Gibbs Ferry, I do want to clarify something. And I don't do a good job communicating when I get home and my husband says, where are you gonna get one point eight million dollars to match the grant on Gibbs Ferry? What are you doing? And I said, oh, our match was only ten percent. So, uh, we did get a one point eight billion dollar grant, but the match is very small in comparison. So this gives me, thank you for giving me the opportunity to correct that misinformation for the public.
That's still a huge, that's a great, one point eight million dollars.
Yes, yes, yes.
Grant.
But apparently how I messaged it, he's thinking, we had to come up with another one point eight million. And I'm like, no, no, I gotta fix that. Okay.
Yeah, that was a, yeah, that was a good one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Step, we got the County Law Director, Jay Jaeger.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. Tim, I really appreciate those kind words. Um. I don't have any action items for you tonight. Uh, if anybody has any questions, let me know. Be glad to help you with any issue.
Questions for the Law Director?
Merry Christmas.
Next up, we've got the, uh, Operations Committee Report. Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Allen made a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-two dash one-two dash nine-seven-three, authorizing Anderson County retaining ownership in real property of three oh-three Hill Street, Rockitox, Tennessee, MAP zero-zero-eight-M, Group F, Control MAP zero-zero-eight-M, partial zero-one-four-point-zero-zero, to use for public purpose, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed unanimously, forward full, commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to approve the lease agreement with Highland Communication for use of three oh-three Hill Street as part of the broadband infrastructure project, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Motion passed unanimously, forward to full commission for approval.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, Commissioner Wondell.
Do we have a resolution that we're gonna vote on there, or is it just this motion?
Do you have a resolution on Highlands?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the first one.
It's the next one.
Well, no, it was the first one, twenty-two, twelve.
So the Highland resol, yes, the.
Was it the first one?
The first one was the resolution authorizing us to retain for public purpose. And then the next, I don't have the operations minutes in front of me. The next, um, item should be the lease agreement, and then Jay sent out, um, their attorney wanted, um, some language change to fully reflect, um, the purpose. And Jay sent that out this morning.
Yeah, yeah, we, we all saw it. I, I just, do we need to put that on the agenda, Jay? That resolution, or?
I thought it went through operations.
It did. Yeah, that's what we voted on first.
That's what I thought.
Was twenty-two, twelve.
So that's it?
That's the resolution, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the lease went through operations as well.
Okay, thank you.
And it was approved, but then there's some modifications.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, next, it wasn't an action item to be sent to full commission, but I want to read it anyway. Commissioner McCamey made a motion to allow the mayor to get a group together and have meetings to discuss the fire truck resolution renewal, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Motion passed. So that's something that, that's going forward. Thank you all for that. And that's all the action items.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. Um, next, we've got Resolution twenty-two dash twelve dash ten-seventy-one, establishing the meeting dates and times for the Board of Commissioners in two thousand and twenty-three. Got a motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, Commissioner Vandegrift, I'm sorry.
Should we check the date on the March meeting? I, I believe that may be a Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Was that after a holiday?
I think it's my birthday, that's Monday.
Yeah, we can't. We gotta close the dump that day, too, right?
The twenty-first is a Friday.
Twenty. That was an Easter, was that a Easter holiday? March twenty-first, right? Tuesday, March twenty-first. Typo.
Easter's in April.
April.
Okay.
You wanna make that motion with, uh, contingent on the March meeting being the third Monday? Just clarify that. You okay with that? Okay. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Good job. Motion passes. All right, um, any new business? Commissioner Jaeger.
It's not exactly business, but I'm gonna call it in, in here anyway. On January fourth, which is a Wednesday, we're going to have a work session to discuss, um, rules, Robert's rules, procedures, and any other questions that any commissioner, not just necessarily new commissioners, but any commissioner has, uh, af, now that they've had a few meetings under their belt, they, they understand things a little more, and they might have additional questions. So this will be a, Jay and I kind of putting this together to, um, address any concerns, questions, uh, for anybody. Doesn't have to be new commissioner.
Room one-eighteen A?
One-eighteen.
What, what time?
Four-thirty, I think.
Four-thirty?
Yeah, four-thirty.
January fourth?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to see if we could get the dates. I, I saw an email come across from, um, LeAnn Tupper on the convenience centers closing for Christmas. Mayor, it kind of read weird to me. I couldn't tell what dates it's open, what days. Is it closed Friday, Saturday, and Monday, or do you know?
The convenience centers are only closed on Christmas Eve, so the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so they're open that Friday, closed that Saturday?
Yes.
Then they'll reopen on Monday?
They'll, yes.
Thank you.
So I think they were wanting to do Monday, but because that's right after Christmas, and so we opted to do the twenty-fourth instead.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. And so the twenty-fourth, the convenience centers will be closed throughout the county. That's that Saturday before Christmas.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, as normally. And we'll be messaging.
Any old business? All right, if not, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.